All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Village Board of Pleasantville. We are beginning our work session. Today is Monday, December 9. First item on our agenda is the development at 444 Bedford Road. And the evolution of the site plan, which is a planning commission responsibility, but which comes to us because it proposes some changes in the parking conditions at Wheeler Avenue. If I got that right, so we have here Robert Hughes, our building inspector. Let me just share my screen and we will get that plan in view.
So I'm here tonight on behalf of the village, not the developer. Was during the planning review and a site meeting between myself, Anthony Carr, superintendent DPW, and the architect of the project, visiting there, we kind of looked at a potential opportunity here to make some improvements. So this really all started because the planning commission in their typical review looks at kind of the traffic patterns inside and how developments will be impacted. This development will have two levels of garage. One will enter and exit off of Bedford Road. That you see kind of the upper left on the, yes.
Did I go too far there a little bit? How's that?
So on Bedford Road, you see that kind of proposed curb cut.
Here's the Bedford roadside.
Right. So generally, right now is the existing curb cut in that area as well. So that's going to come off of Bedford and get to one parking level in and out for the apartment complex. The other will be underneath that, but that egress will be off of Wheeler Avenue. You can see that where on that drawing right there, there's a swimming pool on the roof.
Yes.
It's just to the right of that.
Right here, coming out under the building, which we can see here, right? Here's the view, here's the rendering of how this would work. So ingress to the garage is on Bedford, egress comes out.
Two separate levels.
Oh, ingress and egress?
Correct.
Okay.
So they split the traffic flow on each roadway to offset, you know, too much coming out.
So half the users going one side, half in and out on one side, half in and out on the other.
Exactly. Planning Commission's concerns were wanting to make sure, which they have provided plenty of room to turn around inside. So you'll never have cars backing in. But in the discussion of this level, a lot came into play with regards to site distance and the need on that side of Wheeler to potentially adjust some of the spaces because of where this parking entry is going. It's different from where there's a small curb cut today there on that property.
So this is the existing view.
So it's interesting, the picture that the architect took and utilized, which was probably a couple of years ago. You can see a red loading truck there, which is typical because my office is diagonal. I can tell you pretty much every day a truck parks there, but it's not a loading to make deliveries. And one of the questions that came up was exactly that, how you're not wanting something to park there as you're coming in. So your site distance. So we went out there and take a look and lo and behold, that sidewalk there is actually 11 feet wide. So we kind of thought, what if, and this came from myself and Anthony Carr, what if we were able to actually downsize that to five feet and gain for the two lane roadway of Wheeler? Because right now, as you probably all know, very difficult for two cars to pass the parking on both sides. I think it's only 14 feet wide, including the two parking level on each side. So we thought if we can do that, obviously the developer, that'd be on board, which they are, and the planning commissioner has looked at this as well. And that's why it's here because ultimately the board of trustees would determine whether or not this would be a go going forward.
So again, just to be clear for those who may be looking at the tape later, this is the existing condition. Here's that red truck that's parked in what is in essence a no parking zone or parking spaces.
Correct, correct. Kind of takes up an area that really is not a designated parking area. So by downsizing the sidewalk.
Sorry, which, which side are we downsizing?
This is, this is Wheeler right here. So here, here's Village Hall. Here are the diagonal spaces in front of Village Hall, Frank and Joe's, Rhonda, Denver, and over here. Cross Wheeler, here's Lucy's. Here's the former bank building. It's front and it's side down here. This is the senior center.
11 feet wide on the side of the scene, in front of the senior center in front of the.
All the way along here.
That's all 11 feet wide?
No, so it's 11 feet wide in front of this property all the way down. So this building goes from Bedford all the way down in that area. You see the whole roof.
Okay.
There is a small section of there. They have a parking area. I wouldn't really call it a parking area today, but they have a little bit more room there.
In the back.
Village owns.
Right.
Right. Senior Center.
Okay, so.
The property that the village owns, it's not 11 feet wide. It's only five feet.
Okay, that's the park.
Correct.
So in the new evolution of this proposed new evolution, do these wells, I mean, their basement extends under the sidewalk?
They're going to go away. The intent of the development is to remove those.
Okay, so we would no longer have the trap door and the grates.
So that would be a brand new sidewalk. Now, if we're looking at the plan, the intent was to keep that corner tree.
Which corner tree? The one, this one?
Yeah, it's kind of down at the corner. You'll see there's, there used to be a tree there. If you go to the plan, I think they kind of show it and I think they're going to look to reintroduce it to the right. They planned this tree right at the handicap drop.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
So if you notice that the 11 foot sidewalk will extend and be maintained further and then shut in to create this kind of pseudo like loading area. So that way.
So this is the existing curb line and then it bounces in to provide an ADA compliant five foot walk the rest of the way.
This way now, the parking spaces will all shift over to gain another five to six feet of aisle width for the two lane of the cars to pass now. So we think a great improvement of just vehicular passing there.
Right.
Unfortunately, at the expense, it will disturb the number of parking spaces along Wheeler.
So to the tune of losing these ones that are in red, right?
Right, so.
One, two, three, four.
Spaces today. Now, mind you.
16 on Wheeler. Curb side parking.
If we re-strip things, we probably lose two spaces because they're all at different lengths.
Okay.
15 feet, 18 feet, when ideally it'd be 22 feet. So even if you wanted to re-stripe them and do it correctly, you'd probably lose two spaces at a minimum. This proposal would lose four. Now, the fourth one in the right, by right next to Lucy's, you see that dotted red line there?
Here.
That's a suggestion because since that 11 feet is remaining, we thought in conversations that if you open that up, it might open up that little bottleneck there. So when a car is making a turn from Bedford Road and you had a car coming out, as we all know, you can't get by that.
Right. So if you're coming this way, past Village Hall, having come over the railroad bridge and turning right, removing this space would free up the mouth of the intersection.
Correct. And that's because of the 11 feet at that area, the reason that portion is staying. The planning commission did not want that loading area to come all the way out. If there was going to be something there, they wanted to kind of hinder it and restrict it. They also thought this kind of pseudo loading, loading area would be helpful when people are moving in and out possibly, knowing that they would probably use it, you know, rub hubs, deliveries, a lot of different things right in that area. It might be ideal for the apartment, where regardless of kind of, if they open and really help the cars coming out of there, having a great site distance that you can present.
And then Lucy's often has people loading in and loading out amps and guitars and all that sort of stuff. They're often on this side of the street in the parking spaces, but this would also potentially be useful for them.
Ideally.
As long as nobody parks there. Right, and that.
We would say at this point, you probably would ask the village to have some signage there limiting it.
Right.
That way there can be an enforcement.
So, I mean, the idea of getting of eliminating spaces on this side has come up in various times over many years because it is so narrow. The thought had always been that in one respect, it kind of slows people down, but it's with the more vibrant activity at Lucy's and increased activity associated with this building. It seems like we, this makes a lot of sense.
Well, we thought, myself and Anthony Carr, thought that the benefits of widening that two lane roadway is pretty significant and, and we kind of were taking advantage of the development occurring here because the development would be responsible for a lot of this.
Right.
They would end up having to do a whole sidewalk to start because that would all be disturbed. So we thought by, you know, making this.
Yeah, this is the time. So, and then we.
The proposal here is open and intended to maybe extend this at least halfway into the village owned area.
That is reduce the width of the sidewalk so that it doesn't bounce back out until here?
Correct. And basically try to maximize this additional width of two lane roadway as long as possible. The reason we can't go to full length is, one, we can't get to the senior set of, one, it's their property. Two, they actually have a container out there that we don't.
Right, right here.
Want them to be able to have the loading trucks pick up their carting. And there is another tree on that property over there, our property, that we thought, you know, no sense of losing. If we have to turn it back in anyways, at some point, we'll only do it halfway. But it leaves, open up this as much as possible to make this a little bit easier for cars to navigate. I actually just went down there today and literally a car was coming down and I actually pulled into an open spot and then come by. And I was driving a little late.
Yeah. So it seems very logical to me.
Speed increased activity, I guess, once ArcStages finishes their.
Yeah, although the interesting thing about when ArcStages finishes their theater, the primary entrance is on the other side.
Correct.
Right.
This side here for ArcStages would still be utilized when they have their summer camp and a couple of things like that. But yes, the, when they went through their planning review, that whole parking lot between them and Athlete Warehouse is going to get completely redone.
Right.
So at the owner, the reason that's delayed, the owner is dealing with that of the property.
Right.
ArcStages is a tenant and Athlete Warehouse is a tenant.
Oh, okay.
So part of their approval, the property owner is going to do all that. So that's going to get a whole.
Yeah, I don't, obviously there will be people still parking on this side and you can walk alongside in that walkway adjacent to the building, between the tracks and the building to get to the other end. But the primary entrance to theaters won't be where it is now.
Yeah, correct.
It's still being losing four parking.
Totally, you know, so the net loss, that net loss of four, does that also, Robert, assume we would rearrange the existing ones to make them consistent or we would leave them alone?
It's interesting, the left side, which is getting this whole chain, the ones that really had the problem. The other side, we're close enough. So pretty much the other side would stay untouched. But this whole roadway is going to get repaved and re-stripped as part of the development.
Right.
Now.
And then it, to the extent that we wanted to rearrange, we just have to move the meters.
Well, on this side, yes.
Yes, which is not a big deal.
Like I said, the majority of this whole length will have to have a new sidewalk regardless, even if it stayed at 11 feet. Then immediately it'll probably come out, have to be quadrill again before that. The comment that the planning commission had, they wouldn't be against it. The first spot by Lucy's had to remain because they know it's critical not losing too many spots.
This one.
Yeah, they, they, because if you're not parking on the left side where the sidewalk is wide enough. And if you actually look to the aerial drone photo to the right.
This one?
Yeah, that one there. There's parking on Bedford Road next to Lucy's. So there is a little bit of length. So when a car makes that turn, they're not really into Bedford Road if a car is coming out. But that was a suggestion there that the board.
Yeah, so it's this space that's in question.
Superintendent DPW, who I believe is on as well, you can comment if you'd like. And the architect, the developer, and the planning commission were, were on the fence on that one. They felt, you know, ideally, lose and then you open it up as much as possible. But if that had remained, even the traffic consultant, nobody had significant.
Have the folks at Lucy's been aware of this idea?
So they're getting close to a public hearing for this development. The owner of the property who's directly involved in Lucy's, he'll get a notice and they would be notified as far as what they're thinking. But they're not at that point with public hearing. They're getting close with planning.
Right.
They want to have.
Well, it might, I mean, I could mention it to Rob Catalano, just so he's aware of it.
I thought here we want to get the feedback of the board before.
Yeah, makes sense.
Probably touch base with them and say, listen, here's the situation that may be occurring.
I mean, honestly, nobody likes to lose parking spaces, but I think the logistics adjacent to Lucy's would be better for them too. Right?
The loading times have to be at all times, like for it to be a loading zone, it has to just always be that. It can't be like partially loading and then at a certain time it may be parking.
Yeah, yeah. Ideally in that area, we probably would look at it from the planning and everyone who's not having any long. And the only reason we even talked about this, I mentioned it to him and it happened to be in the photo. I said, this happens all the time. It's being used that way. If we can shift them over, knowing it's going to get done and let them at least have an area, it would give a little bit greater flexibility, as the mayor said, with Lucy's, when maybe the vans show up or the deliveries to the stores, because I think that what happens, a lot of these delivery guys who might deliver to places on Wheeler, park there knowing that it's convenient.
And they can get out, right?
And they get in and out. So they loop.
Which is good.
To Wheeler.
Right. I mean, that, that's, I mean, I think.
Residential development, it's, it's kind of the thought process that a lot more deliveries to residential, food wise, Amazon, you'll have a lot more in and out. And the planning commission talked a lot about deliveries going into the garage, but everyone just agreed, it probably never happened. Most, most delivery guys would not drive into it. They'll drive the front door and want to, you know, we thought if we'd rather not have them double park on Bedford Road, we'd rather have them parking in an area here that might be allocated for them that they can go in and out.
So I think it's a good plan. Thank you and Anthony for evolving it. Anybody feel otherwise?
I was just curious. I mean, I, I don't spend much time looking at that area, but it doesn't hinder any of the seniors to come in and out of the downtown, right? Considering the sidewalk is smaller. It's not like the requirements from like all this ADA, you know, this type of how you build sidewalks. I just, I think because it is really the center of the town in many ways, it's not that it's going to hinder any. You know, it's our senior center. So I'm just thinking, I want to make sure if anyone's in a wheelchair or anybody has to go to and from, it's not, the five feet is, is standard.
Correct, correct.
And let me also say.
As the mayor pointed out, this building back in the day had extensions underneath the sidewalk, which are no longer needed. So, you know, this was built pre-zoned and that's why it's five stories. I think back in the day, our zoning was unlimited, you know, they gave a height that was maybe something deep. But I think in this particular case now, that's the really only reason for it. So I would say that more often, many of the seniors coming that way, they're only walking on the Bedford area, but they probably don't want to walk on.
Right, you got, you got these grates here. I've walked by there many times.
So they're actually just going to go away and will be an ADA compliant, brand new sidewalk the whole way.
And that wasn't a drainage issue back in the day. Like it's not that.
No.
No, it's just that the basement extends out, right?
Any increase of impervious surface on this site will be dealt with on site. They're actually doing a re-roof. And the project is actually, they're trying to create even a wider sidewalk. If you see in front of the existing building, we have a really gracious wide sidewalk.
Here.
They're stepping the new addition back on the left side to continue that and create like an outdoor promenade, wanting to create this as much as possible outdoor kind of space. So that the building, yeah, right on that proposed drawing there, you can see that the building has stepped back. They can build right to the property line. They're not.
And they won't put parking spaces there, obviously.
No, no, that's whatever existing on that Bedford Road will remain. The only change along there would be the designated, but the curb cut, the drop curb to the left is actually there already. That's the.
For the parking lot to the, right.
Yes.
So generally speaking, on the traffic flow for the residential, if the building was 100% occupied with offices, you would see a significant amount more traffic than what will happen with this development. It's hard to digest that because nothing's really been there. But reality is more than likely with the residential units, you'll see a lot, lot less coming out of that area than what.
Especially right there in the downtown, to the extent that the residents are train oriented.
Be very hard to come out of, don't you think?
Well, I, I mean, right now, the, you enter here and you exit here.
But that light gets so congested.
Right. And so since the beginning of time, this has been an issue where a lot of folks who are coming out of here want to turn left. And so they'll wait until there's a space to do it, even though, right.
Joining the planning commission, how often they've talked about site distance on that roadway with their traffic consultant, our traffic consultant. Oh, yes.
Wow.
The distance and how far they made them go back up. And another reason why the architects and everyone pushed the building back, so that way you have a lot more room. Last discussion was some type of acknowledgement there for the people walking, whether stripes or something pleasing to the eye that would let a pedestrian know their cars and let a car know that a person is going in. There's some talk about maybe some type of beep or something. There's, that's being discussed because they, you know, they want that to be.
I don't know, we got trouble with beepers already.
But this talk about trying to make this where cars are not, you're not got, you don't have cars coming really flying in and out of there. And the planning commission was adamant about that level, really having generous turnaround to ensure that nobody go back at it. So they actually allocated when you, if you ever come across, you look at the plans, which I can always get to you. They are giving up a lot of square footage in that privilege to accomplish that because the planning commission did not want anyone having any chance of backing out.
It's a shame they won't give us a couple of spots inside, but if they're giving up that much already.
They're at their, they're meeting zone, they're meeting zone.
So, Robert, and the assumption here is that the parkers there are, are residents and they would be assigned to one or the other level because you can't go in one level and get out the other. So how did it end up in the current proposal for the use of the existing first floor bank space?
So the bank space is right now, as this application proposes, it's either going to be similar, but your bank's considered an office. So you have office or retail. They're almost identical. So that's how they're proposing it, which means they're not required to provide parking for zoning because there is something there now already. So here's the example. If a restaurant came along, there's different criteria. Typically that happens in a lot of developments or buildings where a tenant comes along. They would have to go before the zoning board and at that point, they would probably seek a waiver of parking. They would probably get it. And the reason I would say that is because of the part that the restaurant would be going in is actually existing. Would be like a restaurant going in there today where there's no apartment being proposed. They would have to treat it, the board would have to treat it with the same eyes and, and how they kind of look at variances because you're dealing with an existing space.
So last I, I haven't looked at the latest plans, the, the bank space was being reduced, right? The, the commercial space wouldn't be as big as the bank atrium was.
Yeah, pretty significant.
And is it, does it remain a double height space or?
It does, to a certain extent. There will be a portion that will be taken away, but they are trying to maintain that. Where the architect showed kind of just a general rendering on the drawing, where you might have a little bit of a wall space. But they're not building that space out. They didn't want to get into too much detail because typically when a tenant comes along, depending on the tenant.
They have opinions, yeah. And does the, the current plan leave space for a restaurant, including a kitchen? Or would the kitchen need to be in the basement?
It doesn't take that into account. They did not allocate any room in the basement for the commercial.
And how about kitchen HVAC, all that kind of stuff?
I guess, they, they are, they're not into that detail yet as far as the building of where if they maybe create a shaft. Most of the buildings that have a residential will allocate a shaft somewhere through the building to accommodate that just in case. Because you never want to have it to where you can't accommodate a restaurant because you now have to revamp the whole building.
And we can't have a.
They are very specific on this building as, you know, you get second one in, third one in, of what development you learn. And they're getting much more talking about the specific of all the architecture here, rooftop units, exhaust units.
What color are the rooftop HVAC units?
So I mean, it's certainly.
And, and the applicant, we gave the applicant a lot of heads up, even when they proposed it, to be aware of the specifics that might be.
So what, not that it's germane to our purview, but what does happen in the basement?
They, they have an area that they're trying to maybe do a gym for the tenants. You're also coming in off the lower level in that area.
Yes.
So you're coming in, so it's kind of an elevator and a kind of a lobby of mail drop, things of that nature. But just the ground floor. I think the planning commission is pushing for a restaurant, which we never usually heard that before. But again, they don't.
Well, and, and I mean, that would.
They don't want to take the restaurant because then it changes their whole parking counts. And why would you do that when you don't even know a restaurant's going to come in there? You have no idea.
I mean, that would be great, though the idea might be, it would be a complicated condition for parking.
Yeah. My guess is based on the size of it, I would say that you might get something, but it might be along the lines of a fast food. When I say fast food, not a franchise fast food, but something that's kind of like a larger sized Lulu's. Something like a cafe style, not necessarily a forward. More of a, an in and out where they might have it to where there's, if you're under eight seats, you're a retailer. You get over those seats, which I think this could, you then jump into that fast food. And that's where I think the zoning board would still, I don't want to speak to them obvious right now, but if that came down the line, you know, being that it's so much smaller than what's there now, it's, it's a good, good chance of being able to get a variance at that point. But I don't think we're talking about 25 car variance, you know, it's not that big of a space to require.
Right. All right. So, I mean, my take on it is, just to be clear to anyone who watched the video later, the evolution of the site plan is a planning commission issue. The matter before us is whether we would agree to this modification of our right of way on Wheeler Avenue. And I, I would certainly agree to it. It seems like it improves this project and it improves circulation there at the price of losing four parking spaces.
So similar.
Does that, everyone?
Similar to developments, there would be permitting for that. You'd go through street opening permits for an entity, it would go through the village and be some clarification with what the specifics and documentation may or may not need having done. But they're, this would be getting us approval, at least a thumbs up here. Then that project can continue and the planning commission's comfortable knowing that, okay, that part of that review is kind of done. So we can be confident knowing that we can tweak and finalize this, not having any major changes on wheel. And then we can have the developer start to really implement this.
I mean, I, I'm not trying to speak for what else.
One thing I would say is that I think that as we, most of the grumbling that we hear around the village about parking, I think really is more economically driven than anything. It's our businesses drawing people in and it's complete. I don't know if anybody can remember all the way back to 2019 when people complained about parking in Memorial Plaza from nine AM until, you know, 5 PM and commuting for the train, which is no longer an issue. Like literally, we've had a third of that closed and I haven't seen every space filled. I don't think once during the permanently hours. Instead, we now have more difficulty finding parking in the evenings than the late afternoons, the evenings and on the weekends. And we can either choose to be less successful as a village, draw fewer people in, have broken windows, or we can.
It's not that bad.
Right? No, I mean, because it's entropy, right? It's going one way or the other. You're always on a balance. So, but what I'm saying is, we actually still have a reasonable amount of parking within a fairly short walk, particularly for anybody who's ever tried to park in a larger place. But I do think we're getting to the point where it's not obvious to people who don't live here where a number of our secondary lots are. So if only on the village board, we had an expert in signage, I really think we ought to now start to think about engaging a signage plan for the village.
Well, I certainly know a few things about that, although I wouldn't be the guy to do it. That would be a conflict of interest.
No, you could do it for free. That would be no conflict of interest.
I will say.
Add that to the list.
Variances that have been granted are existing situations. But one of the things that the zoning board said often is, they literally will go around on different dates and check. And there is parking, you just have to do one door. That's usually a statement that.
Right, but you have to know where it is, yeah.
That if it was weird, weird to park or how you do that, if that's a concern, I can't disagree that that would be a benefit.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we've all commented, we came in tonight and something is going on. I don't know what's going on. It's crazy.
Well, that's why, yeah, I think it's also bringing attention because we're, you know, we're parking down Wheeler. Right? Like, I mean, anybody that came here tonight maybe looked in that direction. I know I did. And then I just wonder, I mean, maybe it's not common, you know, this is not something we can speak with a developer about, like having that, people that work in that area, and that's also what I'm just also curious about, them losing spaces more than just the people that are coming in for the restaurants and things like that. That's for spaces that people might work at Lucy's or people that work maybe at.
Yeah, although in theory during the day, they can't park there all day.
Those are not. Right, but meaning like they're in and out or where, you know, different things. And even behind there is a, what's the print company that's behind the senior center?
Scarborough and Tweed. The spaces are specifically not intended for people who work there because they're, they're only for two, two hours, right?
Right. Scarborough and Tweed has parking issues. I can, I mean, everybody has issues. There's no doubt about that.
Yeah, just I think we're in a, as we develop, losing that many spaces is very, I mean, it's a lot in comparison.
Now, I always thought that, and I know that probably can talk about is a long Tompkins kind of sidewalk in there designated park. I think there is an opportunity now to fix that and get some tree popping over there. But I know a lot of commuters probably park there and maybe willing to. But I know a lot of commuters probably pop there and maybe willing to walk, but you know, there is that entire area as you potentially made it as a game there. And the planning commission and developer, I I'm here tonight because I believe the developer wanted here to ask for a loss of parking space. I really hate myself and Anthony, when we were out there and we looked at it and him and I looked, he didn't say we might have an opportunity and make the roadway better here.
Yeah.
Uh, the development's getting done. But yeah, I think everyone thought you don't want to lose spaces.
Yeah, I just don't know how many people who don't live, even how many people who live in the village who realize that we have a parking lot that we own or that we, sorry, that we have use of in front of the church, you know, that you can park in and you're literally what a block and a half from from Wheeler, you know, like there's there's a number of lots that are just not at all apparent to the casual observer.
Well, and in the category of dream states, uh, we've talked for many years about the possibility, would it be realistic, obviously a great cost to deck the parking lot that wraps around Lucy's uh, wi- with the idea that there is an an entry and egress uh, on Bedford near the bus uh uh shelter to the top level and entry and egress to the ground level from Wheeler, uh, potentially avoiding the need for stairs and all of that between. A whole bunch of issues. First off, it's a whole lot of money for not a tremendous number of spaces. And the other is, it turns out the state owns part of the ground uh adjacent to the tracks that we might want. So I I don't mention it to suggest that it's uh, anything realistic in the imaginable future, but it's it's on the list of what could the world look like.
Well, one of the things is developers split the garage level. When you have ramps in the garage, it really becomes problematic. You lose a lot of room.
Right.
And that's where, but I think the ultimate there was that she also also set how many cars come in and out of it.
Yeah, which is, I think that turns out to have benefited everybody.
This is what I say, we have a lot of developers and people and we're becoming a real beacon to be. We have a lot of developers interested in helping the village out. So if there's any way that we can kind of coordinate and get something specific like here, we can get a benefit, we certainly should ask that question of them. So that's important that the village does gain this, that the residents see that they're getting a benefit to what's happening like more of the direct parking or so forth or, you know, street improvements.
Yeah, I mean, if you think that, yeah.
And just a couple things uh evening with Ted Burns.
Oh, well, there you go.
That's tonight.
Uh, to your point about parking maybe not for that, I mean, on Cooley Street, it'll be beautiful now.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We've added a whole bunch of parking.
Oh, the the plaza will be at, you go to.
Always open.
And it's always. It would, you know. Give the story that Jacob Burns, I may went in very initially. Will Spargo said you can have all lots of pop there for five o'clock. We called it five o'clock. Your patient will talk during any time. I said to the guy, how do people talk, basically, not actually what?
Wow.
He said, we stopped telling people to talk, they just didn't want to walk.
Wait, where can we park?
So Jacob and they got they got a hundred percent waiver on their booking. Everyone wondered why. Part of that, well, Will Spargo has said been in the bank at the time. Walking out a lot, right? Right down the block, Will Spargo and Jacob.
So so it's okay, it's like.
I don't, that's years before me, but talking to the uh person on site there had mentioned that and I'm like.
Interesting.
He said it was because a lot of people didn't want to walk and I said, you can literally see the time coming. But that goes back to what we were saying.
Right.
There is a mindset of like one of the great now. Granted, I think a lot of the cases that Jacob went might be more senior, because I can understand it, but there is a potential of that there that unfortunately right the immediate.
Yeah.
In addition to to your point about updating or enhancing our signage, I checked with there, maybe a good idea, maybe budget for it next year, but look at the the wayfinding signage and also the signage in the plaza that better communicate.
Absolutely.
You know, the layer regulations.
I also think that um people don't realize how long we were planning the improvements that just finished on Manville Road and the Civic space.
I did not have gray hair.
Yeah. You didn't have gray hair before two thousand nineteen.
Here over ten years.
Yeah.
Right. Um, and I think it it would be helpful to be able to publish a timeline of the number of spaces that we had before we acquired Cooley Street for that, before we acquired like.
Yeah.
It could because people seem to think that we're making all these decisions that are shrinking parking when actually we've considerably expanded the overall parking, you know, over the last five years.
All good.
Thank you. All good. Thank you. Uh, Anthony, anything you want to add to any of that? Are you?
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Board. Uh, no, I I, you know, the the building inspector did a very good job of presenting the uh the project and and you know, from from the from the development standpoint, DBW has no objection uh to the proposal. The the overall, you know, like like Rob said too, we were out there and you know, you 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 all live here and you you see this more on a daily basis too. This this is the opportunity to kind of improve and and um, you know, fix some of the things in Wheeler Avenue that maybe we wouldn't be able to get to sooner uh and maybe more on the later side. So I I think now that the developer is here and and they're with their impact, both, you know, with vehicles and infrastructure is a good opportunity for both sides to collaborate and and determine what the best um level of improvement, so to speak, will be. So that would include milling and repaving of the road, new curbs, new sidewalks, a hundred percent agree with Rob. Eleven foot sidewalk there i- is totally totally overboard. There there isn't enough pedestrian volume needed to for an eleven foot sidewalk, especially when you're walking through Manville and Wheeler Avenue and 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 it's like half the size there. So you you know, there's opportunities there and uh, yeah, re- reconfiguring the parking spaces to current standards and then sliding that space back by Lucy's. Uh, definitely a big improvement and and just widening the road. I've seen this work in White Plains and and even in Mamaroneck where you do a kind of a drop off area. And and you kind of cheat it that way to get a wider road and uh, it works and and it it improves flow, uh, safety. Um, and and also too, whatever happens in the future with arc stages. You know, depending on where that those 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 attendees and and patrons exit, you're going to free up a lot of a lot of uh area and definitely improve uh pedestrian and traffic flow. So no objections here. Think it's a good opportunity to to improve uh the functionality of Wheeler Avenue. So I think Rob hit all the point. Not worried about it from an infrastructure standpoint, sewer, water. Um, you know, already looked at that too. We're not too worried, uh, not worried at all about being able to supply them with with the infrastructure and we'll we'll assess if we need the developer to to um perform some additional improvements with the utilities, but that's that's a that's a tomorrow's discussion, not not tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Developers anytime I can get in some improvements.
All right. Hey, thank you. Oh, Tom?
The uh Bedford roadside, the three story building. That's three story, obviously for grade, the parking lot is at one story below grade.
Yeah, so when you're on the Wheeler, you'll actually be coming on the same level as Wheeler, but that will now be a story below Bedford.
So so that'll be a story behind, so but it's going to be a three, a two new three story building, one on Wheeler and one on Bedford.
Correct, correct. So just bear in mind the new.
But they're offset by a floor because of the grade.
New addition will be combined with only the existing building is the five story that's previous and they're not going up to that level at all.
And in the five story bank building, the apartments that will be above the 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 area below. They were taking into consideration for the number of parking space inside the garage.
Thirty six apartments in the entire cross project, including the bank building. Thirty six apartments, twenty one bedrooms, uh sixteen two bedroom. And all the parking criteria were based on the bedroom count and they're fully compliant.
And the interesting thing we've noticed, correct me if I'm wrong, I think thirty nine Washington and seventy Memorial uh, would both indicate that the demand for parking spaces may be less than the requirement in our zoning.
Basically, you have two working models, uh, the some sort of walkway that the pure is a hundred percent occupied and seventy Memorial, I believe, is sixty percent occupied. So you you hardly see in in and out vehicles.
Right.
There's confidence here knowing that the it'll be minimum impact, you know.
Yeah.
Prove positive that in regard to people moving in and out.
Well.
May have noise and not.
And as you said earlier, uh, people need to realize that the repopulation of that building with no changes at all, if it were fully occupied for offices would generate quite a few cars and a lot more in and out.
The drive itself was more significant probably impact than what this apartment bill book building will be if every car came out at the same time.
Right. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Much appreciated. Thank you, Robert. As always, great job. We were going to talk about the schedule for the uh budget process. Yeah, let me just share the screen here. I've got that schedule you had proposed.
Yes, it takes us through um our internal meetings, uh, and then it highlights the meetings that will require the board to attend. Um, you all can just take a look at those dates and let me know by the end of this week if you can whether you all can make them.
Did you uh send this to us?
Yeah, it's it's attached to the agenda. I can email it.
Yeah, can you email it separately?
It's in Granicus, so. So, uh, and just to be clear, uh, it's not specifically a budget matter, but uh, Eric's got it in here. Tuesday, February eighteenth is a tax grievance day. That's property tax grievance day. And we're required by law to hang out from five PM to nine PM uh, for the potential to uh, receive and discuss property tax grievances with uh any property owners. The reality, pardon?
On February.
Right. The reality of of those, and that's a state.
But we're not required by law to not show Ferris Bueller's Day Off at the same time.
I will leave that to you, trustee Benjamin. So at any rate, uh, as has been the case in recent years, uh, most people elect to file and interact with Lloyd, the assessor, uh, over time. Uh, but a few do come and wish to make the case directly to us. Uh, but there are definitely a lot of sitting around, so. But uh, mark your calendars and let me know whether that February eighteenth is okay for you because we are uh, we have to have a quorum. So.
Uh, and then on a scheduling matter too, we had chatted about the meeting, our next regular meeting would be December twenty third, the day before Christmas Eve. Um, we're talking to staff. We have a lot of staff that are going to be out, so uh, probably not as well talk about any major items, so we may want to do a bill pass meeting, which is just that we held in the afternoon to compete with.
That sounds fine with me.
For for the February eighteenth, does it have to be that week?
It's required by state law. We don't get to decide.
That week.
That day.
Oh, that day, okay.
That is the, that was one of those ridiculous days. I I I think personally, I I guess that's from the top down, so you can't change it.
It's just a holiday break.
Oh, I just think it's always very tricky, like in the sense like it becomes, everyone's away.
Uh, winter break is up.
So just let me know. We have to have three of us. Doesn't, we don't have to have five of us, but we have to have three of us, so.
I probably will not be here, but I will try to change my plans. It's also my birthday.
All right. So well, hey, happy birthday.
Well, why don't you have?
I just have a big.
This could make it more fun than it has been in the past. All right, uh, seven fifty nine. At eight o'clock, we will roll into our regular meeting. Let me just get rid of this PDF, which we no longer need. So Paul, we're gonna do the resolution four twenty one, appointing uh, Michael Duffy as the very first activity, taking it out of order. So we can do the swearing in and we won't make our new associate village justice sit here as we do every other thing first, so. All right, it's rolled to eight PM. Ready to roll? Good evening, all. Welcome to the village board meeting for the village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, December ninth. Uh, our um next regular meeting is two weeks from today. That is Monday, December twenty three, but based on people's uh schedules and the village schedule, we expect that will be largely uh, a quick meeting for passing the bill, the the bills that need to be paid, and we don't expect to have a an otherwise substantive agenda. So uh, next meeting is two weeks from today, the twenty third, but again, just a bill pass uh meeting. So uh, the first item on our agenda is uh of the appointment of a new associate village justice. For many, many years, uh, Virginia Collins occupied that role and did a bang up job in that capacity and uh, in a shocking act of disloyalty, she retired from the role after after many years. Uh, so uh, it gives me one more time shout out to Gigi Collins uh for uh the great uh work she did on our behalf. Uh, she retired in October. We have spent some time talking to candidates who might uh wish to occupy that role and we are delighted to welcome here tonight, Michael Kevin Duffy, uh, who will become our new associate village justice, and we will momentarily uh, swear him in after we pass resolution number four twenty one to appoint him. Uh, and while we do that, a shout out to Stephanie Tim Austin, our court clerk, uh, who is here tonight and who uh is the bedrock of the operation of our whole justice court. Uh, uh, Justice John Vukel is unable to be here tonight. He would otherwise be here, uh, but it is uh a great night for the village of Pleasantville and a happy day. So Paul, uh, how about resolution number four twenty one?
Result of the village board trustee write points, Michael Kevin Duffy, associate village justice, job class code zero one five zero, with a term expiring April sixth, two thousand twenty five.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Apparently without dissent, we are fortunate to have Michael Duffy. So can I ask you?
Michael Duffy. Come on up. And raise your right hand and repeat after me. I am Michael Kevin Duffy.
I am Michael Kevin Duffy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of New York.
Constitution of the state of New York.
And the code of the.
The code of the village of Pleasantville.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of associate village justice.
The duties of associate village justice for the village of Pleasantville, the village of Pleasantville, according to the best that might, according to the best.
Congratulations, associate. All right, now come on, give me your phone. This is the woman. It says the clerk from the court. Makes a mark. You want? Donovan, if you want.
Oh, you've got it?
Today's the day.
I know, I just sit to her.
Thank you, sir. I do right here. Where you see your autograph. Oh, yes, gotcha.
Right, yet yet another good reason to have you. I'm a lefty too. She she's already put it to work. You gotta love Steph, that's for sure. Um, all right, let me just get back to the proper screen here as we return to our uh regular activities. The first is um, a few announcements uh to make. Uh, the first is a shout out to our Parks and Rec team uh, with the assistance of our DPW team, putting together the holiday lighting and getting everything ready to go. And congratulations to the Chamber of Commerce. Paul, why don't you just give the list of thanks that ought to be thanked for our recent lighting ceremony Saturday night?
Um, it takes a village and community to put one of these events together. So as Peter stated, all the different departments, uh, we also wanted to thank Pace University for providing the hot chocolate. The Masons provided cookies, the rec provided um candy. And then we had vendors, we had Wooden Fire, we also had Freddy's there available food. And then uh Hurricane Fire was a band. And then we had uh the FC girls soccer team who was the the children's chorus that helped us out too. So all of these different groups helped us out in a big way and we had a great event. This is the first time that we did it on a Saturday. We moved it up to six o'clock, so it's a little earlier and we had a lot of people come. It was a cold night, but we still had a really good amount of people and everyone had a good time. So we're very thankful to everyone.
Thanks to you, thanks to the Chamber of Commerce and to that whole list of people that you thanked. Also, uh, uh, we had a a small but happy event where uh, we, uh, had a brief ceremony, uh, celebrating the planting of seven trees in the Hopper Street parking lot. That's the one across the street, the side street from, uh, Southern Table. Not an event we would normally have had a ceremony for, but we'd have been pleased and proud about it, but those trees were largely funded by a grant, and that grant required us to have a little, uh, uh, event, which we did. Assemblywoman Mary Jane Shimsky joined us. Uh, so, take a look over there. Uh, I'm also happy to report that that project was uh, supported with a donation from the, uh, folks that run the dog daycare, uh, site, which is immediately adjacent to that parking lot, so. Happy to report that there are seven new trees of varying species there that will eventually be, uh, pretty big, uh, trees contributing to our tree canopy. Not a village issue, but certainly an issue that affects many of us. Congestion pricing in Manhattan begins on January 5. Uh, and so, uh, I continue to get a bunch of emails from the MTA, uh, and recommend to all folks that they take a look at what, uh, the rules and regs are, and, uh, also make certain for folks, uh, that they have their EZ Pass account up to date, because that is dramatically easier way to manage all of this if you're driving into the city, uh, during rush hour conditions, uh, in midtown. So, take a look at congestion pricing. It begins on January 5. Eric, you want to just give a quick, uh, update on, uh, our Manville Road, our Civic Space, our pool, and our Clark Street Venture, our collision of public works projects all at once?
Um, we're just, okay. Manville Road, uh, right now, we're doing the, uh, last touches on pedestrian signal upgrades, so a very, the contractor there has been, uh, wiring those. Uh, we are planning to do permanent striping. We were planning to do it tonight, but, uh, can't do it with wet roadway, so that we're trying to do it on Monday nights when presumably it looks quiet here, which has become a bit of a loud part. Uh, we reschedule to next Monday. We have rain again, we'll likely push that out till, till January then. The, uh, last piece of that is the, the mast arm as well. That's likely to be installed, uh, in January. Um, we are planning to repave the northern end of Memorial Plaza, uh, starting at 5:00 AM, 4:00 AM, the middle, and then by, uh, morning, pave when we get some sunlight and warmer weather. Um, and that should be done by that will all be striped, but the Civic Space should be done by the end of the month. Clark Street, they're making great progress there. That should also be done by the end of this month. Everyone has access to their driveways back, and hopefully the weather cooperates there. Uh, at the pool, they're also making really, really good progress, uh, Knock Gumwood. Uh, Mother Nature's been rather forgiving. And so, uh, they're doing everything they can. Soon they'll run into temperature limitations, but they've made uh, good headways so far, so we're still tracking to, uh, out of the door of, uh, um, on this end project.
I think that's certainly the, the big one. So thank you for that, Eric. Uh, thank you so much for all that you have done to keep these things running.
Yeah, can I just add to that? Um, you know, there's, there was a considerable amount of agita in the village, uh, or at least socially, on social media over the last couple of months, over all these changes that were, uh, happening in Manville Road. At the same time, for the past couple of years, there have been complaints about the timing of the signals on Bedford Road, um, and amazingly, nobody seems to have noticed that all of these things have improved at the same time, um, and traffic's actually been moving fairly well, um, on those two quarters, uh. So, I, I wanted to thank personally, uh, our administrator, Eric, uh, the DPW, Anthony Carr, all the people who have worked to make this happen, and, you know, you guys have no idea how much wrangling of contractors, persuading of city and state officials, negotiations behind the scenes. At one point, I believe you avoided an entire year, uh, uh, delay of this, this project due to a signal arm condition, you know, that have gone into this, so it is very, very much appreciated, even if people don't know that they appreciate it.
Thank you for that. I mean, it, it's amazing. When you look at the projects we control, like Clark Street, like the Civic Space, they get done very quickly. It's the ones where we don't own, uh, the rights of the right, that we don't own. On the Manville Road, the signal front, um, we put in the open protection system, um, that's not even hooked up yet, so after everything is hooked up, the, uh, traffic should flow, uh, more efficiently, specifically that Washington Avenue signal. That has been the bane of many people's existence. Um, we should see considerable enhancement once everything's up.
And once we're finished with doing the field studies?
Yeah, we'll do a re-timing, but that alone should alleviate a lot of the issue.
Great, thank you.
All right, then, um, as those who follow our goings-on, uh, uh, probably know, the last Tuesday night, we had our annual joint meeting with the school board, and I bring that up, uh, in part, to highlight a couple of issues that have arisen. As you know, the school district has a capital, uh, plan proposed that includes, uh, turf, new, new, new artificial turf on some fields, replacement of artificial turf on others, and the idea of adding, uh, lights to High School Main. That isn't our issue, and I am, uh, not, uh, intending to weigh in on the pros or cons of that. The reason I bring it up is that many folks have said, "Well, why can't Parkway be turfed? Isn't that a more appropriate place for this kind of activity, uh, especially nighttime activity involving lights?" So, two things to say about that. The first is, as you might imagine, both of these sites, the High School Main as well as Parkway, uh, uh, are adjacent to residential areas, and so all of those neighbors obviously have, uh, issues, as everybody in Pleasantville does, who lives next to a or nearby a church, a playground, a playing field, a school. Sort of the gift as well as the, the burden of a community that is very tight-knit and has lots of uses all close together, so. The point I wanted to make, and I won't go through it in detail, I, I described it in some detail at the joint meeting, is that the idea of turfing Parkway is an extraordinarily expensive venture, using the ballpark number $10 million, uh, for replacing existing grass with turf. All the upgrades attached to that, putting up the required fences and completing and relamping, completing the light towers around it and, and relamping all of them with, uh, the newest LEDs. Placeholder number $10 million, which I think is not unrealistic, based on the numbers the school district is showing for the projects they have. A project of that kind in several different iterations, depending on how you try to pay for it, uh, would, would, uh, warrant a very large tax increase, uh, to the village residents, uh, specifically for that project, separate completely from whatever increases arise, uh, in the general progression of, uh, our budget lives, so.
And you, didn't you, uh, roughly estimate that number?
So, uh, depending on how you bonded it, uh, uh, if you were to use a 15-year bond, uh, which is a bit problematic, uh, because it is not likely a 15-year lifespan for the turf. Uh, I, I say that the school district uses a 15-year bond because that aligns with the way the school provides, uh, the state provides, uh, uh, building aid. In our case, uh, if we were to, uh, undertake that with a, uh, with a, uh, 15-year bond, the average taxpayer might be seeing a tax increase of 300 and some dollars a year just for that. And then in years 12, 13, 14, 15, depending on the life of the field, when it had to be replaced, you would then be confronted with two bonds, that is, paying off the bond for the turf you've already torn up, and paying for the new bond for the turf you just put down, so you'd end up, again in today's dollars, not accounting for the uh, growth of things over time, 700 and some dollars per average taxpayer, uh, and, you know, recognize that this is an expense that if you bond it, never stops, uh, happening, because you use up the fields in 10, 12 years, that's the general estimate, then you have to do them again, so. Uh, uh, it gets darker from there. If you used a 10-year bond, or if you actually used a 10-year bond and at the same time, uh, provided a sufficient tax increase to develop a capital fund that in year 11 would allow you to pay cash for the field, then you're talking 17, 18% tax increase just for the field. So, I throw that out there, because lots of folks perfectly understandably say, "Well, why can't we do that?" And others might disagree, but from my standpoint, that's just an untenable tax increase, an untenable, uh, expense to burden the entire village with, and so in the midst of that, uh, we are, uh, looking at various other ways in which we can up our game for turf management. What we know from, uh, recent history is that in years when the weather cooperates, we do pretty well. In a year like this, when October turned into a desert-like drought, uh, the field suffered. Uh, we do have irrigation, but it was insufficient, obviously, to overcome that. And in years when there's a whole lot of rain, it gets muddy and, um, that presents a different problem. So, long story short, the Village of Pleasantville is looking to do the best job we can with turf management. I do not believe that, uh, artificial turf is a realistic expense. Among other things, we don't get any state aid on any of that, and whatever dollar we spend is a dollar out of the taxpayer's pocket. Some have suggested that the village and the school district should get together and consider the idea of, of, uh, selling or giving the fields to the school district, in which case the village would no longer own it. Uh, and then potentially the school could undertake whatever they want, and that might conceivably, um, be eligible for state building aid. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. Um, what I've said, and I will say again here, is we're happy to talk to the school district about anything, um, and happy to have that conversation. I think there are a lot of issues that would have to be worked through, and I don't say that with uh, the sense that it's a slam dunk of any sort, or that even in the end, from the village's standpoint, it would turn out to be advantageous. But a conversation totally willing to have if, if, uh, there's a consensus that we should have it, so, uh, that's my quick report on that subject. Anybody else want to add anything to any thing we've said or have other announcements?
Just to, to add to that, the vote for the capital project is December 17th. Um, so if you're, you need some information, the school website has a lot of information, Q and A on the capital project, but, uh, it's important that uh, whatever side you're on, the vote happens on December 17th, so it's time to, um, put your input on like the field, whether to go forward with that project or not.
All right, um, so having gotten through that, uh, happy to take comments from any member of the public who has something to say on any subject. Enter and let us know who you are and where you live, and tell us what you think. Uh, and I offer the same to anybody who might be on Zoom. Let me just take a look to see if there are any hands raised. I don't see any at the moment. Anybody in the room? Anything to say? All right. Someone just arrived. I just offered, anybody who has something they wanted to say to the board are welcome to do so now. Did you have anything you want to say? Come on up. Yeah, welcome. Give us your name and, uh, address and tell us what you're here for. Uh-huh.
I'm going to Alpine Terrace, which means that I'm officially not in this district.
Yes.
My question concerns this district.
Okay. Go for it.
The comment is that there really needs to be a traffic light, but at the bottom of Mountain Road as we intersect with Pleasantville Road. I think, you know, as the town gets more and more populated, it's increasingly difficult that turn to make, and even, uh, more, uh, perniciously, I guess, is that, green parking is allowed on Pleasantville Road. Right, you know, on, on the block next to that intersection.
Yes.
So, um, what it does is creates a pretty nasty blind spot. Four of those making a left turn there, and a few weeks ago, and I had a pretty close call. I'm a very, you know, safe driver. I never gotten into an accident or even a ticket, but I had a pretty close call because it really looked like no one was coming, but yet there were like two SUVs like lines up, you know, next to each other, so I had-
As you're coming out from Mountain, trying to turn left towards the village?
Correct, exactly, right. I had to honk, obviously, and, you know, I'm on the brake.
Yeah.
Felt bad.
Yeah.
Um, and I really could not see the person, and sometimes, you know, if I had waited another, another second, there would have been another car, you know, coming from one other direction, so I just think it's a very, uh, perilous left, left turn, and it's-
Yeah. So, um-
I actually had a picture of one of them.
Yeah, I mean, we're pretty clear on it, and, and, uh, so, uh, you have come to the right place for sure. The far end of Mountain Road is actually outside the village, but that intersection is in the village. Pleasantville Road is not our road, county road, uh, and so a decision to put a traffic light there would uh, be ultimately a county decision, um, and I can tell you that there are a whole bunch of criteria that have to be met in order to have a traffic light, and one of them that arises is the separation of lights, and so I don't know whether they would argue that it's too close to the light that's at, at Manville, but, um, that's one interesting question. Do, do we have purview over the parking conditions?
There. Yeah, we, we can, um, yes, we can make recommendations.
I mean, but we do have to recommend that to the county.
They, we would need to get their food.
But they're likely, is it, so, I mean, just, just for starters, uh, the idea of a light is a longer process. But just for starters, y- your point would be if parking could be eliminated at least one space.
Yeah.
To get more vision, so, all right. I thank you for this. We will get our police chief to take a look, and TPW, take a look, and then engage the county.
One other kind of side point.
Feel free.
Very related.
Yes, totally.
Also, I think there should be a left arrow, that, that big intersection of, you know, Pleasantville, Pleasantville Road and Manville Road.
As you approach the bridge?
Supermarket, right, yeah.
Yes.
Going into town.
Yes.
The supermarket on your left, sorry, supermarket will be on your left.
But before you get there, that first traffic light before Pleasantville Ford?
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. Left turn rush hour. Sometimes when people walk and they press, you know, the walk sign, and that adds another 30 seconds of time.
So you're, you're suggesting, could there be a dedicated left turn signal?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Get this kind of onslaught of-
Yeah, no, I know, and I can tell you, I mean, we've all had the experience, there's this moment when you're not sure you can see around the cars that are trying to turn left themselves, and it's not clear whether there's a car that's coming that's going to go straight, so, um, there's been a lot of talk about that intersection over a long period of time. The county undertook, uh, signal upgrade, I want to say 10-ish years ago. And, uh, I don't know what they'll say, but we'll bring it up in the same context as the Mountain Road story.
And I know it's not just Mountain that it's very hard to make a left onto. Sorels and Pleasant are, are difficult to make a left to that light as well.
Right.
Same situation, but you guys are, they have a bigger blind spot up on the hills.
Yeah.
I think that's it, but there are some others in this town too, but that's the one which really stands out to me as, as a glaring need. It's, it, it can just be very scary trying to make a left turn.
There's also a crosswalk there, if I'm not mistaken.
Which could also, exactly right, so something that could also add more time.
Right.
It's, uh, I don't feel that, I think it seemed, you know, but statistically, a disproportionate number of accidents are, occur while making a left turn.
I'm sure, yeah.
Yes. They-
Right, yeah.
So, uh, that one just strikes me, uh, well, those two strike me as particularly difficult. I still feel like it should be like a super stressful situation, just making a left turn.
All right, so we, uh, will take a look at that, uh, especially about the parking, because that could be a near-term fix, and then we'll get our, our colleagues at the county to, to, uh, take a look at that. I would think that eliminating a parking space would not be-
DOT and the county Public Works Certificate.
Right.
I will say there is a multifamily on the corner there somewhere, so I don't-
Yeah, and I still, I know that parking is under shortage around here already. I hate to eliminate more of it, but I mean, it really is creating-
Yeah, all right. Well, we'll take a look, and certainly that's an issue too, for sure, so. All right, thank you, sir. Glad to have you. All right, Tom Rooney. Tom Rooney, Hillview Drive.
Yep, Tom Rooney, Hillview Drive.
Yes.
The traffic light at Pleasantville Road and, and, um, Manville Road there. It's just the fourth, the fourth place. Yeah. Several years ago, exactly what he said happened with my wife, terrible car accident. She was hit head-on, at the point we had, we had like the, we had a suburban, biggest car in the road, and the car coming the other way just kind of totaled her completely. Fortunately, she wasn't injured. Fortunately, she wasn't injured badly, but the police came, they did everything. I've been trying not officially to get an arrow at that light for as long as
Right.
or she had that accident years ago. I just wanted to say.
He was headed in the same direction George just mentioned, right? Wanting to turn left on to, yes, yes.
One coming car was waiting to turn left.
Yes.
And another car coming up behind it.
Comes around it, right. Yeah. Yeah, that's real, so.
I don't know about the the Mountain Road part, but I do know about that part.
All right.
I hope you can get it.
All right. Okay. Thank you. All right.
Jonathan Cunningham, 14 privately, I'm actually here for the search your discussion, so
Okay.
Hard to believe, right?
Shocking.
But I did want to respond to some of the things I heard you guys say.
Yes.
First of all, David, I appreciate the update on the signaling. I will say be careful with that statement right now because I don't know that the average person Pleasantville is feeling. And maybe it's to Eric's point that the signaling is not all done. I was, I was just a few days ago on Bedford Road backed up the Great Oak from the lights in the village. We actually almost missed our train. Luckily, I knew the shortcuts down through Martling and around in the back. But I boots on the ground, doesn't feel like it improved.
So I got to, I don't doubt that there are moments. I will say I'm on Wheeler much of my day and Wheeler is definitely better. So, right, yeah.
And that brings, you bring up a pet peeve I wasn't intending, but you got to keep that left illegal parking spot.
So it's not actually an illegal parking space, it's not marked, no parking here at a corner. We should take a look and see whether we think it ought to be. Your point is when you Well, you say offender if it's if it's not a no parking zone. I don't, I don't know what I'll look when I go out, whatever. Your point, just for the benefit of people who haven't had the discussion, is when you come to the traffic light at Wheeler, you want the capacity to have a second lane so that people who are turning left are not in the way of people who are turning right. And you can get better throughput.
Correct, that's that on Wheeler.
On Wheeler.
Wasn't even intended to speak about
Let me be specific because I live on Washington Avenue. I drive the route that you're describing every day. Absolutely, you're right, the right hand turn from Washington onto Manville, that hasn't changed yet. I was talking about moving through Manville, north and south, or east, east and west, which way does Manville run? East and west. Through that has changed dramatically. If you'll recall, there was a near online revolt when we decided to, that, you know, when we had to pave that road, repaved the road, it was done in three days instead of five. And it's been, you know, that traffic has been actually moving quite smoothly and very differently from from the construction, which nobody's forced on.
Judgment in that area just because I've been waiting for the construction.
I'm just giving you my judgment and I do have boots on the ground for sure.
As I said at the joint meeting, I am 100% behind the idea of requiring, the idea of giving fields or leasing the fields to the school, at least engaging in a real discussion about that. I mean, I'm sure there are aspects of it I'm not aware of, but the aspects I am aware of, I I don't even know why you guys are buying, honestly. The expense, the headache, the, the, you know, 85% of the activities, all school related activity now. Dad's club is no longer a village thing, the ASO is no longer a village thing.
Well, but it's not a school thing either. I mean, I would say Dad's Club and ASO are are. I mean, one interesting question, there are many interesting questions, but one interesting question is, in the hypothetical that the school achieves its capital plan and executes it, they have indicated that they feel they need that regardless, that it wouldn't matter to them what happened or didn't happen at Parkway.
Yeah.
And that the idea of turfing Parkway, although I'm sure would provide clearly benefits to the football teams, would not change their thinking about what goes on at the main campus. So that's what I'm not, yeah.
Actually, is, they haven't studied it. They, to the best of my knowledge, they've never even approached the village over the last year as part of their capital campaign.
They have not.
Not sure
Right.
how they're making that statement without actually ever having investigated it. But there's a lot about this capital campaign that I got questions about. But but needless to say, regardless of whatever happens with the capital campaign, you know, I think the, I think there's some merit to at least be investigated.
Look, as I said, you know.
It doesn't make sense. The village has answers right now. The village is just left wondering, why are we doing this? And so
So, look, as I said earlier, I think we're we're happy to have a conversation. I don't say that to suggest that I think it will be successful or or that I don't. I, as you might imagine, see a lot of issues attached to it. But, you know, the whole point of seeing issues is to sit down, see if you can work through them to some positive result. You know, there are a bunch of aspects of that property that I'm guessing the school district wouldn't want either, including the whole drainage issues and the fact that there are public stormwater flows that very much affect all of that. And that our engineers and DPW folks have had a long, long experience of dealing with and dealing with the Department of Transportation and the adjacent sawmill and all of that. But, you know, so the two things I would say about that is, look, happy to talk about that. But I would also say we can't always achieve what neighbors would want when a change is proposed. But that neighborhood has plenty of residential properties, just as does the high school, middle school neighborhood. And so, you know, folks imagine understandably that, look, there, there's already a, already a field there. There are already lights there, you know, this feels to people like the more logical thing. Let me also say that, you know, we don't need to get into the weeds about it. There are a whole bunch of aspects of this that would be, one would have to figure out, including the Hopper Street parking lot, which I, I think we would be, it would be hard to imagine that we could give that to the school. And what folks don't realize, but I know you know, is that the parking lot off Village Lane is owned by Henckels. It's not owned by the village. And they have been generous in allowing its use. And we have a formal agreement to do so, but it's a revocable agreement. So, you know, there are a whole bunch of issues there.
No, and 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 none, in my opinion, are insurmountable, but which is why it's worth having a conversation.
Better be careful, you could end up as a citizen committee chair.
I am, I
You seem to have time.
Yeah.
Let's put it this way, if 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 the conversation long, I'm willing to entertain that.
All right, let the record show.
Noncommittal. Third point, I was, well, I happen to be married to a member of the certification community and was out with them
Yes.
Recently. They were concerned that there was concern expressed about not having the lights on, the Christmas lights on. And it sounds like they've gotten on and village doing great.
I think that are they done there?
Yeah, they were set up to align with the tree lighting.
Right.
But we talked to Kathy.
I'm sure Kathy will be happy to hear that that is now done.
It looks, it looks great. And a shout out, shout out to Kathy Tinkle and and her crew, because those were the guys that last year, you know, tightened the screws on us to fork over the the money to do this. And I think it it delivered in spades, even though it's expensive. So it really looks great. And I will say it just connects with so many other good things happening in the downtown, so.
I agree, 100%. So thank you for getting that done and making that happen.
Yeah.
With Kathy's feedback, we're going to light everything probably before Thanksgiving. And then we'll keep them on through February.
And your guys' expense Thanksgiving was late this year.
Yeah, right.
So but anyways, well done, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
And search your, I'll be fly and
Yeah, fine, be, you're, you're, hang on, hang around. Because that's next on the list.
Is the hat from one of the Clint Eastwood movies or?
You know, no, it's my own creation.
It's from Toronto.
Do cowboys customarily wear them indoors or no?
Yeah, they do, actually. Everything I've seen, I don't know. I set my own trend.
And and successful in doing so. All right, I have, assuming there's nobody else who wanted to say something, I just, let me just double check here in the chat, I don't see anyone. All right. Let's go to the resolutions. We completed the last resolution or the second to last first, which was the swearing in of Michael Kevin Duffy as our new associate village justice, filling the very big shoes of our retired associate village justice, Virginia Collins. So with that, is there a motion to open a public hearing concerning local law, introductory local law six of 2024 to amend chapter 21 of the Pleasantville Village Code to expand the residency requirement of certain appointed officers?
So moved.
Second, all in favor. I, motion approved. So Eric, I think there had been some commentary on social media about this that I think perhaps misunderstood what is going on. You want to?
As Kurt was instructed, limits residency required for village officers or appointed positions. So that that's village administrator, village clerk, treasurer, deputy treasurer, voting inspector, village engineer. Limited that to residents of Westchester County. In an effort to be able, what we've noticed in recruitment of some of these positions is that the candidate pool is very thin to begin with, less and less people are getting in this line of work, less and less people have this level of expertise, and many of them don't live in Westchester County. So as we look to recruit in the future, as we look to promote, I'm looking at our workforce, we don't think it would be in the village's best interest to expand the residency requirement. So we are not alone, many municipalities, special villages have done the same thing. And so what this local law would do is expand that to New York State.
And for anybody who has not recently looked at one of those job listings for the village of Pleasantville or bought a house in the village of Pleasantville in the last five years, you may not realize that unless you have a spouse who's a wealthy dentist, you are not going to be living in Pleasantville on what you'll be earning doing one of these jobs. Is that fair to say, Eric?
That is fair to say. And I'll also note, most of our village employees or in our unions, they reside outside of the village. So that that's a requirement that does not exist for 95% of the workers.
And and arguably, I, I mean, I, I understand how these kinds of residency requirements evolved over time in a rather different world. But in the current environment, I don't see that residency in Westchester provides any significant advantage whatsoever to most of these roles. Obviously, the roles that depend upon familiarity with Pleasantville and Westchester are equally likely to be filled by someone who's in Rockland or 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 Duchess or whatever. So I think there had been concern voiced apparently on social media that this might be a wrongheaded move. I think it is simply a method whereby more folks who might want to serve in a civic role here have the opportunity to do so, and we have more people to choose from, so.
And just for clarity, if you want to serve as a political official on one of our boards, our approving boards, planning commission, zoning board, fields, you do need to be a resident, board trustees, obviously.
Right. Right. And 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 that, again, that those are roles where zoning, planning, for example, these are people that are shaping aspects of the development of the village. And it is entirely appropriate that they be residents of the village. Likewise, the same is true of our village board members. But when you speak about administrative roles, we need a broader reach to get to the people who might want to work here. All right, any comments from the public? Any comments on Zoom, raise your hand in the in the chat. Come on up, come on, come on, come on.
Why you, Jonathan Cunningham, why are you mending it and just not eliminating? I mean, in New York State, why even have it? We're going to limit it to New York State to get rid of it.
Yeah, that's our village attorneys recommend. And I think, I think once it's in the code, you're better off.
So, and you know, some would say, well, why, why couldn't we appoint someone who lives in nearby Connecticut? Right? It's a reasonable question. Right, a reasonable, a reasonable question. So I think there are some legal issues attached to all of that, and we could reconsider whether there's a means of doing that as well. But for the moment, this is a reasonable step.
I mean, if the idea is we're trying to get the right person, and it's a, it's tough to do that, I understand.
Yeah, I believe there, there may be a part of the of the New York State village law that requires some type of residency clause.
In New York State, right, so. So stay tuned, reasonable question. All right, any further comment, anybody? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second, all in favor. I, motion approved. All right, let me go back to my share. Okay. To the resolutions. Paul did the first one, David for 10.
Resolve Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated October, December 9th, 2024 for fiscal year ending 2025. From the general fund, $1,808,176.84. From special purpose, $489.18. From the water fund, $256,723.11. From the capital fund, $267,471.46. From the refuse fund, $69,966.20. For a total of $2,402,826.79.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, can you just give a little further explanation?
So, oh my God. We don't, well, you can fill it in in my in my, in my, in my painful role, initiating every one of the vouchers. This is a collision of a, an unusual number of high expenses paying for pension contributions, paying for capital costs and all of that.
So annually, we make our contribution to the ERS, which is a general employee, New York State Retirement System, and then the recent buyer retirement system. So that happens once a year, some towards the end of our fiscal year, there'll be an adjustment and salaries change. But that was over, well over a million dollars.
Right. And all budgeted, mind you, it's not like any of this comes as a surprise.
Yeah, there's a payment claims that's attached.
Yeah, just so we have it on record.
To serve as the claims author, so he gets to go through one of those vouchers.
It's, it's, it's one of the truly thrilling aspects of my role.
Plus they have the capital spent.
Right. So the very good news is that we don't spend $2.4 million every meeting, just this meeting.
I just know people won't read through.
No, I understand, yeah, yeah, yeah. So again, as as David mentioned, anyone who is interested in the nuts and bolts of all of this, you can click into the attachments in our online agenda, go to Pleasantville-ny.gov, click through to the meeting agenda, it'll bring you up to the agenda. And you can look at the backup for this and pretty much every other agenda item we have. When we're approving a contract, the contract's attached. The only things that aren't attached are things that engage confidential matters like personnel or or the like.
I was happy to see that the highway folks managed to get a screwdriver set 10 pieces for $10.96.
So here's my favorite one. I always have a favorite one every, every month. And my favorite one was a bill to Nielsen Ford in New Jersey for 65 cents. Now, in their defense, there were several other bills that were more substantive, but somehow or another, this came through its own, as its own invoice for 65 cents, sent to us with a stamp and they'll send it back. So there you have it. Comments, questions, or any other sort? All in favor? I, motion approved. Yummy, 411.
Through the tax, sorry, proceedings titled MGR of 444 Associates Co LLC versus assessor of the village of Pleasantville. It's Alice, this is a lot.
You don't have to read all that detail, you can say, as described in the record.
Pending before the New York State's framework, and whereas these proceedings contest the real the real property tax assessment of several contingents, tax parcels. The real property tax assessment of several contingents, tax parcels situated at the corner of Bedford and Wheeler Avenue identified a section of one.
And you can say again, as identified in the record.
Understood. Where am I getting to the part that I'm reading then? Let me just.
The last three, I think you should, you need to read. The last three wherestes.
Whereas a proposed settlement has been reached, provided, providing a disposition of the claims asserted in these proceedings. And whereas the village board of trustees has obtained the advice and assistance of its counsel, Keenan Bean. With respect to proposed settled settlement and duly considered same, and whereas pursuant to the settlement, the 2019 and 2020 assessment. Fantastic. These proceedings will be sustained and the 2021 through 2024 assessment of the tax parcels. Involved in these proceedings will be reduced and whereas a result of village of Pleasantville tax reduction will be due in an amount. Equalling approximately $41,346.34 slash 141,346. Now therefore be resolved that the village board of trustees authorizes the settlement of these proceedings to adjust. The village of Pleasantville 2019 through 2024 assessments.
And I think you can say as 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 recorded in the record.
As recorded in the record and judge me go through these numbers as well, right?
You don't need to go through them all. All right, because they go on for a while. Then the last, be it further resolved.
Solved the village administration and Keenan Bean PC as attorneys for the village of Pleasantville and hereby authorized to take the steps necessary to. Effectuate these terms, including execution and entry of a consent judgment.
Is there a second?
Second.
So. As described, this is a property tax challenge concerning 444 Bedford Road. The former Chase Bank Building. Long conversation between them and their representatives and Keenan Bean, our representatives. Over a period of time, including a proceeding that actually is pending now as recorded before the New York State Supreme Court.
Can you, sorry, Mayor? This is another thing that was online, so I think it would be helpful for people who may be listening or will hear through some present party later about this to have a. Better explanation of what tax certiorari are and. Why they're filed and why we would presumably arrive at this number or worse if we went to court.
Okay, so I'll give you the thumbnail sketch. Eric, you'll pitch in. Where I need to be steered back into the middle of the road. A tax certiorari proceeding is a challenge that says. The property tax assessment and thus the taxes I pay to the village is unfair. And there are a number of. A bases upon which you can make that argument. Those are a bit different in the context of a commercial use as opposed to a residential use. But among the opportunities a commercial property owner has is to say, my building may be worth X. But if I present. An income method for my building that indicates what it costs me to own it, including the property taxes I pay to you, and the income it generates to me. Is one basis that the law allows. As a means of identifying the quote unquote taxable value of the building.
And that's not village law, right?
That is state law.
Right.
State law. So you know what what happens, and it happens whenever somebody comes forward, residential or. Or commercial property owner and requests a reduction in their assessment. In some cases, they present an argument that seems entirely fair and it's reasonably easily resolved. In other cases. There may be a disagreement. That is, the applicant feels differently about it than does the village and our attorneys. And that conversation continues. Sometimes it actually continues into court. That's obviously an expensive venture, not only for the applicant, but also for the village and. Let me also say that if the village takes a matter like this to court and loses. There are substantial penalties attached to that. So as you might imagine, in every case where we propose a resolution like this, which as as Yemi already read, it produces a. Refund of a little more than $41,000. Over a period of six tax years. And establishes a new assessment base. Pending the vote we all have. We are confident that our attorney has advised us appropriately. That this is not only. The a logical step for us to take, but likely the best result we can look forward to. Fair description?
Yes, and just to add on, usually during these, during this process, our attorneys working with the town attorney and the school district's attorney can come up with the best scenario. The best settlement.
Because in in most of those cases, that the town and the school district taxes are based on the town assessment, not the village assessment. But in many cases, as you might imagine, property owners file a tax challenge on both assessments, one to the town, one to the village. So.
So their current taxes are. True, 124,000.
Now, this is, that's the assessment. That's not the tax bill. And we could look up the tax bill online. You can look up anybody's tax bill.
Yeah.
At pleasantville-ny.gov. I I don't know what it is. It's.
Considering how much we're giving.
I mean, ultimately, the tax bill is not, I mean, it's of interest, obviously. It's not a relevant. Aspect of the case. It's solely about the question of the valuation of the building, and that can be done based on market value. It can be done based on a. An expense. Basis. So. Jonathan, you had commentary on this. We have several others, as you know. So. Come on up.
Well, this. And I I didn't look closely at all three of them. One said they got single family home or something, which is different. Maybe it's different. So it's my annual, well, biannual or once every four year pilgrimage here to. Express my outrage over over these certioraries and the way that they're viewed. You know, my my personal feeling is that. This has become a gigantic echo chamber where the attorneys have convinced themselves that, you know, there's no, there's no solution in the courts. They scared the municipalities into believing, do not pursue this in court because you won't win. And if you don't win, there's a huge. There is a huge penalty and and there is.
Including paying interest on all of it.
So as a result, these things never fail. You guys always vote them through. And.
Keep going and then I'll.
Well, I mean, and we've talked about finding a test case with the town. I've been off the board for nearly 10 years now, and so probably five, five times we've talked about. Finding a test case over the 10 years to 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 join with the town and challenge one of these in court, and we've never done it. And so as a result, they just keep propagating. I mean, in four or five years, you're going to have the same guys back here doing the same thing. And and that's just the cycle. And as a result, I don't, I I haven't looked closely at this, but my guess is that the new, the new. The new. Assessment value is going to be a significant discount to the old one. And and the people who pay, just so you know. Because this is arcane stuff, but every, every one of those dollars that you give away, the residential homeowner picks it up. Because you still spend $16 million or whatever your tax levy is. So you're giving this money back, but the residential homeowner picks that up.
Just to be clear, every taxpayer picks it up, not just residential. Every taxpayer.
Savior picks it up, but not every taxpayer has access to the income method, only the commercial property.
That is true. Yes.
And so the commercial properties cycle through, do their income method and get these big discounts, including co ops condos and apartments. And the only ones that can't do that are residential homeowners. So over a 10 year period of time. The commercial properties equalize out using the income method and the residential homeowners are left picking up.
So Jonathan, can to, so I can understand your concern.
Yeah.
Are you saying that? The attorneys are not negotiating. The calculation of the income method correctly, or are you saying that the income method itself? Is flawed and has a legal basis for challenge that we should be doing challenge?
So somewhere on records is a white paper I did for you guys just when I left, give you the, give you the legal challenge of the income method, but the income method is flawed.
Okay.
But it's lawful.
It, oh, it is lawful, but flawed. And I don't know what the state of the courts are, but the mayor and I actually spoke with.
We we did. I was going to bring that up. Yeah.
11, 12 years ago.
When we were, but you know. I think I was 11 and you were 15 at the time.
But wouldn't the, I mean, wouldn't a better way to approach that though be through the legislature to actually?
Here's the problem with the legislature. So the legislature is driven by New York City. And New York City is, you know, dominated by commercial property, so they just cannibalize one another. They don't have, they don't have the disproportionate housing stock of residential versus commercial. So it's less of an issue for them. And in fact. You know, I mean, I don't want to go into all the things that quite frankly, I'll be talking out of school, but the reality is that New York City has no interest in changing these rules. So as a result, the legislature has no interest in changing.
So let me, let me also say that there are widely varying opinions upstate as well. It's not just a New York City issue. And indeed, New York City has a special carve aid and some of their rules are different. But.
Have you talked to the, you talked to the town or to the county? Because. It it would seem, just tell me if I'm wrong about this, but it would seem like for us, if we lost $100,000, $200,000 in court costs. And attorney's fees and everything else, that that would be a big deal if. White Plains lost the same amount. It would not be as big a deal to them and the, and what they could gain from it would be higher, right?
Yeah. So I mean, just to back up a bit. The, 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 you you said at the outset that this is an outrage. I I push back. In my opinion, it isn't an outrage. I know how you feel about it, and I respect that. And in many respects, as you know, you and I agree. But we're confronted with the art of the possible here. And our attorneys, in whom I have lots of confidence, and we certainly, you included years back on the board, have prodded them in various ways. But when we arrive at a moment when our attorneys, who we trust, say. Your odds of winning this are either low or or 50 50. And if you won it, you wouldn't, you wouldn't go, you know, a slam dunk like no change. The the level of win you might gain is a reduced assessment that is higher than a proposed. Settlement, but one is confronted with the reasonable question, on behalf of those taxpayers you want to defend. Are we willing to put a stake in the ground? To try to fight something when our legal advisors who live this every day and who are in the courts. Say, you're probably not going to win, and if you don't win, it will cost your taxpayer significantly more. So you know, that's a different kind of outrage, right? Look, the system is highly problematic and. You know, from a purely philosophical standpoint, the the ideal solution is a townwide reassessment. I, as you well know, that is. A proposal that is first off expensive, but secondly, causes a lineup of advocates and opponents. That is different from the lineup of advocates and opponents for a matter like this. Because whenever there's a townwide reassessment, the idea would be that. True fairness is created because everybody's being assessed at the same snapshot in time. But I can tell you, as as perhaps you know, that that has been done in a number of committees in Westchester. Greenberg, the biggest town in in Westchester, did it some years back. A big and fraught process that perhaps ultimately produced a lot of benefits, but I can tell you that it produced. A flood of tax certs because people were confronted with a significant increases in their taxes, which in the view of that assessment were fair. And as you can imagine, the people whose taxes were reduced in that reassessment were not heard from. And you know, same story happens here. If a homeowner or a commercial property owner thinks they could gain a benefit, they seek it. If a property owner thinks they're probably under assessed, they keep quiet. Who among us doesn't do what the law allows? Every year, coming up in February, we're.
Faulting the commercial, it's all legal. I mean, I I would do the same thing if I were in their shoes. I'm just saying that. The, the, the sort of. And I'm not, I'm not faulting the attorneys either.
I don't know. You said they're, they're all living in an echo chamber. Well, you're not faulting for that? I mean, their job is to see through it.
So if 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 they're, no, what, I'd like to know from them, when was the last time they they challenged a certiori based on the incomes? The income approach and gone in and said, you know, you're discounting this at 10%. You can't get, you can't get 10% in the high yield market. You can't get within 400 basis points of 10%.
And that's. Okay, so so again, as you know, come back, come back to the capitalization. Come back to the capital, come back to the capitalization rate for co ops and condos. We've had this discussion 1,000 times. Where the assumption in the tax calculation is, you know, very high return on investment in the hypothetical that a condo project were. Sold commercially. It doesn't make sense, and yet that's what the law is. As you well know, believe me, we talk about this at the Westchester Municipal Officials Association, and we're right now engaged in the legislative. Advocacy process, trying to identify the top six items we're going to try to fight for. And you know, grab the pants legs of our New York State delegation from Westchester to try to make stuff happen. Capitalization rate is one of them. But.
By the way, it doesn't help. And maybe this is changed. It used to be they got the capitalization rate. From a, from a magazine that they thought that the, that the, that the, that the developers funded.
Right. Again, so I get that. And and believe me, we, we.
It's not reason enough to be able to quote a court and say with a reasonableness. You know, this is not right.
John, let me ask you another question.
Go ahead.
You could, I'm actually learning from this, and I do really appreciate it. If you were, let's imagine the village had a commercial risk manager to say, look, we're going to. Make investments, we're going to take legal actions, we're going to do different things. We have to decide which of those is worth doing, given the risk and the reward to the village. And you were that person. Would you advise us to take this risk on behalf of our villagers?
I would, I would, I, I maybe not this particular one. I I don't know. I'd have to start to really monitor them closely because like I just said, I, I, I. I come once every few years and, you know, I'm like, you know. And 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 you guys.
It's like the locusts. You're like the locusts.
It's a good, that's a good analogy. And one that I would cop. But.
I think you're representing a very large population that's sort of talking about this issue as well, which is great. You know, you're bringing it up because it seems like our hands are tied.
Well, so look, I I just, I just want to make clear that. In the average year, as we will see in February, we get a stack of homeowners challenging their tax assessment.
Yeah, but they can like challenge it based on.
I get it. I I get it. I get it. But I can tell you, and again, I, who among us doesn't do what? I'm not challenging people doing what the law allows, but. You know, all of us get in the mail, the envelopes that say, all you have to do is sign here and we will challenge your taxes for you. And we get a stack of these frequently from the same company. And and they say, your assessment is X and that equates to a market value of whatever $736,000. Claimed market value, $10. So the reason they do that is all they have to do is get it filed. From there, they can determine if there's actually any money to be made on a contingency fee deal. And if there isn't, they won't go any further, but it allows them to file a stack of them and say. You claim my house is worth $773,000. I claim it's worth $10. And and so again, is that frustrating? Sure. Everybody. Who participates in this or reads the rules and navigates them in the manner they perceive benefits them. As I hope you know, Keenan Bean, working with the attorneys from the town and the school district often, although sometimes it's just a village issue. Are working towards a a resolution that is. are uh, working towards a, a resolution that is virtually never the relief the applicant sought. It's always some percentage of the relief the applicant sought. And when they get to the point that they think they've gotten as far as they can go in a, a negotiation with their counterpart, then they come to us and say, here's where we are, here's what it would cost you to, to pursue this further. Likely legal fees in the tens of thousands of dollars. That's the moment when the Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees says, by and large, we're going to accept your advice because we have talked to you about this and many others and so I don't know the answer to whether Judd Seibert, who's our primary tax cert attorney at Keenan Bean, uh, could tell us what lawsuits they have followed all the way through. But I mean, again, the, the one we just described is now before the Supreme Court. So we're on the edge of that. So the other piece to be said is, just to be clear, this is four forty four Bedford Road, the project we discussed in work session and which is the proposal, uh, the site of the proposal by the current and longstanding owner to have a substantial redevelopment there. In the hypothetical that he does that redevelopment, then it's ultimately approved. Obviously, the tax value of that property will escalate dramatically. Part of what's going on here is that the tax value of that property is reduced when there is no longer a high rent paying bank tenant. And honestly, I think we would all agree, the likelihood of ever getting such a bank tenant is a very, very low. So those arguments are powerful.
And, and, and again, I, I, I came up here because there's three of them. I'm not picking on four forty five.
Yeah, four forty four.
Because one of the, one of the elements in the income method is your i- i- that goes into figuring that out is your uh, vacancy rate.
It is.
They, they may have a, they may have a legitimate claim on that. So I'm, I'm, I'm four forty four. I am not, I, 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 I'm talking in general um, about these. But, but you know, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to realize that when the, when the commercial properties are able to use the income statement to pay fifty percent of the tax they would pay versus the valuation method, which is what we use for single family homeowners. There's something wrong with that calculation.
So again, I, I mean, you're, you're spouting.
And I know, and I know what's wrong with it and.
But you're spouting numbers there, that there may be such examples. I don't.
I'm spouting numbers. You know.
No, the, the fifty percent, you're saying fifty percent of market value is the, is the number?
Well, okay.
I mean, I, 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 I'm not saying that's not the.
The biggest one to be paid was a fifty percent discount when I was on the board. Now maybe that's changed. Uh, but it's significant discounts, not ten percent, not five percent. It's twenty five, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty percent.
But the way we don't do that is if the law changes and says you can't use the income method, right? That's the way that.
Law change says the, the discount rate has to be tied to some real market value, which is what I would say.
Okay. So again, you know, you wrote letters, as I recall, that we sent to Albany.
I, I, I don't, I, I hope you sent them.
We did, we did, we did. And, and I can tell you, as already mentioned, Westchester Municipal Officials Association and the Assessors Association, of which Lloyd, our part-time assessor, also the assessor in White Plains is a part. The assessors are very clear about the things that make their job harder and the things that in their view contribute to unfairness rather than the goal of fairness. So the willingness of the legislature to change those things in a fundamental way has thus far not been found. Every year we ask it and it has been on the agenda, on the legislative agenda uh, for the Municipal Officials Association. I'm the chair of the Legislative Committee and have been for six or eight years. Uh, I'm going to Albany in February for the legislative meeting. That pitch will definitely be on the radar, but the piece I push back on is I think that the lowly village of Pleasantville, seventy five hundred people, uh, is uh, behaving in the only way we realistically can behave, which is to beat the drum about the aspects of the law that we find harm us. Uh, but at the same time, as, as David indicated, manage our risk uh, in concert with our professional advisors.
And, 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 uh, and don't get me wrong. I mean, this is just a, a, as you well know, it has been for a long time.
A pet peeve. It is. Yes, it is. It's, it's, and I don't, don't, you don't get me wrong. It's.
So, uh, but, uh, I do think that there is, uh, and we haven't done it. There may be an opportunity and I would continue to look for it, where you find one of the, that the, the risk is, there's always a risk, uh, but it's more manageable that we get, and maybe the town has no appetite to do this. I, I don't know. I mean, it affects them more than it affects us or as much as it affects us. You would think they'd have an appetite.
Well, the way, the, the, the group that affects the most is the school. Right. But the town has to fight the case.
On behalf of the school.
Right. So, right. And you know, I can say. Right. As you might imagine, I don't mean to suggest the town doesn't have the right-minded, big picture goals, but the town has to invest in the fight, not the school district. And, and uh, it is the school district's risk obviously, because they too have to pay a tax cert. Uh, but it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough set of circumstances. So.
And, 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 and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that this vote, the vote that you have is not easy and it's, you know, I just, in part, I want you to understand what you're voting for, uh, because this is complicated stuff and it's easy just to sort of read your packet and say the attorneys are recommending it, so we'll go ahead with it. There, there are real ramifications for residential homeowners for this. I not, I'm not looking to the village to solve this um, by itself, but I think it's worthy of some expressed outrage on the part of the, uh, and yes, I'll use the word outrage, uh, maybe not directed at the, at the attorneys. I like the attorneys. But I don't, even attorneys need to be managed, um, and pushed back on. Uh, but yeah, to, just to make awareness that, you know, this is, this is a, this has real, real impact on.
So look, I, I hear you and as you well know, I, I, I know as much or more about it than you do. We've been lockstep in this for a long time, you and I, and I ever since. I, I do want to say that there are people who make an argument that uh, the income method is not just fair, but essential. Uh, and I'll tell you that one aspect of that that's going on right now, you mentioned New York City, is uh, the diminution in value of office space and the impact that that has had on, as you read in the newspaper, some very big developers. You know, right now, discussion of whether the, the Helmsley Building, a, a stride Grand Central Station there will go into foreclosure.
The market value has dropped on that too. So I mean.
Okay. Well, again, right. Right.
The two methods should be fifty percent apart is my, my.
And I, I'm not sure that they always are. Uh, obviously, the circumstance like that, where a building ceases to be economically viable in its current form because of a change in the market, uh, produces an obvious market value change too, but that market value may not change if that building can be, i- is an attractive site for redevelopment for a different use, office turning into residential, you know? Now we're talking about New York City more than here, but at any rate, the, the issues are clear. I think we've. Yeah, we've, we've, we've. So.
If that's the case. So anyways, look, that's my only point is to make you guys aware that there's more going on than just the attorneys making this recommendation and and thank you for hearing me out.
All right. You're welcome. Happy to hear you out. And y'all have two more shots at it because we have two more. All right. Any further comments from the board on resolution number four eleven? Considering the settlement of the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty four tax cert proceeding concerning four forty four Associates Company LLC. I repeat that because it's been so long since we.
We've done this with other buildings before.
We, we have done it. Yes, for sure. Right. And.
Similar amount.
Right. And as you will see annually, our tax attorneys provide us with a spreadsheet uh, showing us the active cases and providing us, you know, confidentially, advice of counsel with uh, their advice about what we might be in for. So that we're aware of the general lay of the land of the potential tax certs we might have to pay out.
Considering how much building we're doing, we don't have like a reserve fund for these situations where, like we're losing out on tax dollars.
No, I mean, it comes out of the general fund, out of the fund balance.
And where, where there's building happening, that's usually a good story because then when the new building comes in, we get more money.
And it gets reassessed in a very current way. Um, the school district has a tax cert reserve fund. Uh, because they're in a different situation with the way their budget works. Further comments, questions?
I second it.
All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Mister Alvarez. Four twelve. And again, the nuts and bolts, you can say as further stated in the record.
Is it going up?
I have it up. Do I not? Did I cease? Oh, I stopped sharing because I did not want people to lose the opportunity to see our happy faces while we're chatting. There you go.
Whereas a series of tax certiorari proceedings titled as the record states.
I mean, I think you should read that first.
MTR Diane Carey et al. versus Assessor of the Village of Plesmal et al. Supreme Court West County Index Numbers five, four, five, one, dash, twenty at SCQ, pending before the New York State Supreme Court, County of Westchester. And where these proceedings contest the real property assessments of two contagious tax parcels identified as section ninety nine fifteen, block one, lot point one, which is lot twelve point. And section ninety nine point fifteen, block one, lot twelve point two on the Village of Plesmal two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty four assessment rules collectively to subject premises and whereas a proposed settlement has been reached, providing a disposition of claims asserted in these proceedings. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees has obtained the advice and assistance of its council, Keenan Bean PC with respect to the proposed settlement and duly considered the same. And whereas pursuant to settlement, two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty four assessment of the subject premises will be reduced by way of reduction in the annual assessment of lot twelve one and whereas a result, the Village of Plesmal tax refund will be due in the amount equaling approximately three thousand seven hundred and seventy six and sixty cents. Now therefore be resolved that the Village Board of Trustees authorizes a settlement of these proceedings to adjust the assessments of subject premises as follows, as contained in the record. Be a further result that the Village of, the Village Administration and Keenan Bean PC as attorneys of the Village of Plesmal are hereby authorized to take the steps necessary to effectuate these terms, including execution and entry of a consent judgment.
Is there a second? So Eric, uh, the, the numbers are all properly identified, but in the table of revised assessments and reductions, it does not show the years. It, I think it did get cut off. It, it's, it's clear in the i- i- in the original, but again, uh, this is a, a, an, a, a assessment reduction on the one lot. Uh, twelve point one, no assessment reduction on the second lot, twelve point two, over a five-year period, uh, a uh, refund totaling three thousand seven hundred and seventy six dollars and sixty cents. Comments, questions? Any comments, Mister Cunningham? Enough said. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Uh, four thirteen, David.
Where's this series of tax certiorari proceedings titled matter five twenty Bedford Road LLC versus Village of Pleasantville et al. Supreme Court West CO Index Numbers fifty six two forty dash eighteen at sequential are pending before the New York State Supreme Court, County of Westchester. And whereas these proceedings contest the real property tax assessment of a parcel identified as section one oh six point nine, block two, lot one on the Village of Pleasantville Assessment Map as established on the Village of Plesmal two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty four assessment rolls. And whereas the proposed settlement has been reached, providing for a disposition of the claims asserted in these proceedings. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees has obtained the advice and assistance of its council, Keenan Bean PC with the respect to the proposed settlement and duly considered the same. And whereas pursuant to settlement, the twenty eighteen through twenty twenty four assessments of the tax parcel involved in these proceedings will be reduced. And whereas a result, as a result, the Village of Pleasantville tax reduction will be due in an amount equaling approximately twenty seven thousand three hundred and seventy four and uh, ten one hundred dollars, twenty seven, three seventy four point ten dollars. Uh, in the record, it states the payment schedule now therefore be resolved that the Village Board of Trustees authorizes settlement of these proceedings to adjust the Village of Plesmal twenty eighteen through twenty twenty four assessment of this tax parcel as follows. Be a further result, the Village of Pleasantville and Keenan Bean PC as attorneys for the Village of Pleasantville are hereby authorized take the steps necessary to factuate these terms, including the execution and entry of consent judgment.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
So as, as David uh, indicated, this settlement involving a refund of a little more than twenty seven thousand dollars is a refund that reflects seven tax years. Uh, that's uh, not an uncommon circumstance where folks file annually uh, and the tax case builds up to multiple years, uh, and ultimately has to be resolved. That produces a, a, a higher number, but as you can imagine, twenty seven thousand divided by seven years is an indication of the annual benefit that they have achieved, although it is not equally dis- distributed across those seven tax years. Comments, questions? All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Four fourteen, Emmy.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes no parking restrictions in the Memorial Plaza Parking Lot North of the gazebo from Monday night December ninth, twenty twenty four at six P M to six P M on December tenth, twenty twenty four for the purposes of milling, paving and restriping. And further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes no parking on Manville Road and Cooley Street to Tompkins Avenue and designated intersections from Monday, December ninth, twenty twenty four at six P M to Tuesday, December tenth, twenty twenty four at five A M. And we have further resolved that the Pleasantville Police Department is authorized to tow those in violation of the temporary restriction.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
So Eric, the dates changed in that second paragraph, right?
December sixteen.
Right. So, so that second paragraph, the, the revised version uh, now online, but probably not in what you had downloaded earlier has revised. So it's authorizing no parking on Manville Road from Cooley to Tompkins and the designated intersections from Monday, December sixteen at six P M to Tuesday, December seventeen at five A M. This is the restriping project that was going to happen tonight, but can't because it's raining. Okay. And then the milling dates.
Billing, we, we said six P M, but we're gonna close the northern end at ten P M. And so the milling can and start.
So this gives us the range for sure. So again, as Eric mentioned earlier, uh, in our announcements, tonight's the night. And although it will uh, create some, some uh, construction havoc tomorrow thereafter, it'll be finished, striped, done.
Yes, by around five.
And will we reopen all the parking all the way to the end? Or will Jabalco still need logistic space there?
That's to be determined, but uh, if they still are operating there, it won't be for very much longer.
Right. It's looking great. So, all right. Uh, the secondary is okay with those changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Four fifteen. Back to you, Paul.
Whereas a public hearing was held in November twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four, closing in December ninth, two thousand twenty four, concerning introductory law of two thousand twenty four. Men chapter twenty one of the Village of Pleasantville Code to expand the residency requirement of certain appointed officials. Now therefore be a.
Now therefore be a result of the Village Board of Trustees here adopts the introductory local law 6 of 2024, which shall become local law 6 of 2024 upon its passage.
Is there a second? This is the matter we discussed earlier, simply allowing anyone who lives in New York State to work for the Village of Pleasantville in certain appointed positions. It has no effect, obviously, on the residency requirement for Village Board members, planning commission, zoning board. Those are required, as they should be, to be staffed by Pleasantville residents.
Sorry, I really think if we have issues with even gaining more people just in the New York State, like would we expand it to Connecticut, Jersey? I just don't know if there's limitations on.
Yeah, I mean, Jonathan raised that question. I mean, we certainly should vote this in, in my opinion. I do think that.
Will we be voting again next year?
I think.
You can always.
But. But Eric, you thought that it may very well be that New York State Village Law establishes some guidelines that would require change in state laws.
I feel bad about asking these questions.
Yeah, no, it's absolutely.
Watching this probably doesn't know the answer.
For sure. I mean, it's a good question.
A couple of questions online, so I wanted to make sure that we're, you know, putting it into layman's terms.
Yeah, for sure.
They, the questions, they wanted to keep it only Pleasantville people. She had to say that it's like, not like, literally only Pleasantville people should be able to do these.
That was the comment itself, maybe.
Yeah.
I will say that.
Because it was like that, these decisions that they're making are, should be made by only people that live here.
They're missed. And honestly, those decisions are being made by people who live here.
Exactly. That's, it's.
Right.
That was, that was a complete misunderstanding that they did there.
Right.
In that post.
You know, if you need a death certificate, it doesn't matter where the clerk lives.
Correct.
Right?
Exactly.
So.
Yep.
Eric is just an instrument of our will.
You guide me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. David.
Resolved the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Administrator to enter into agreement with StarNet Emergency Services to provide standby ambulance service on Saturday, July 12, 2025, for the 2025 Pleasantville Music Festival.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Which reminds me, I meant to say in announcements and didn't. Mark your calendars, Saturday, July 12, and get thee to PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com to sign up. You can be an early adopter and get the best ticket price of all. It's a fabulous holiday gift. All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. David just did that.
Me.
Yemi, 417.
The Board of Trustees hereby accept the resignation of Denise Penza, Recreation Assistant Panther Club Job Code 0269, effective December 7, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
As reported, we're always looking for more Panther Club folks. Welcome to Kerry, our new full-time Panther Club manager. Working out great. Very good news to to help out with that great program. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 418, Paul.
Result of Board of Trustees hereby authorizes Village Administrator to extend bid contract in 2023-05, OnCall Plumbing Services, various locations, with Borelli Mechanical for one year, effective January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2025.
Is there a second? Eric, your honor. Describe, we're just extending this.
Sorry.
Yeah. The extending the Borelli contract for OnCall Plumbing?
That's our OnCall Plumbing contractor.
And very local, right down the street. All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. 419, David.
Resolved the Board of Trustees hereby schedule a public hearing in January 13, 2025, to consider introductory local law number 7 of 2024, mending Chapter 185 of the Village of Pleasantville Code regarding affordable, affirmatively furthering fair housing.
Are those letter words in the right order there?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, I know. It always, all these years, it's like, it's a word salad. Is there a second? So the thrust of this is to clarify that the required 10% set aside in a new project of 10 units or more would be at 60% AMI. That is 60% affordable to some, to residents at 60% of the average median income as defined by HUD or Westchester County. So, public hearing on that subject next year, January 13. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Back to you, Yemi.
Trustees hereby authorize the Village Administrator to sign a letter of intent to participate in the Hazard Mitigation Plan update as required.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric.
So municipalities, in order to be considered for federal funds through FEMA for hazard mitigation projects, we have to update our hazard mitigation plan every five years. So this opportunity to do it with the county will enable us to utilize their consulting professionals at no cost to the village. Otherwise, we'd have to do it on our own. Pretty heavy, but we've gone through this process with the county before. With the latest cycle, it was very easy, very efficient, very.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. We already did Resolution 421. So 422, back to you, Paul.
Result of Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held in November 25, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections to the minutes of November 25? There being none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. All right. Any new business?
Just one comment. I was just researching New York State Village Law. Looks like you must have a resident that resides in New York State. You can't say.
For these specific posts. These are appointed officers, so. But again, as Paul already indicated, there was some back and forth on social media with people imagining that we were going to allow, I assume, planning, zoning, or village board members to reside outside the Village of Pleasantville.
Actually, it wasn't that.
What was it?
It was literally saying that Eric should live in the village. Well, Eric should live in the village, but you know, he should be required.
It was that extreme. It was that extreme, but pretty much anyone that works in the village should live.
We would have a very hard time filling all our jobs that way. Let me also say, obviously, local is good in many ways, but there are also advantages to folks living elsewhere, not only the perspective they have from their own home, but you know, making a distinction between their roles, so.
I'm always glad when we have some police officers who live here, for instance.
Okay. Any further comment from the public? Nobody listening, no hands raised. All right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As mentioned, our next meeting is, as usual, two weeks from today, but it will be purely administrative to pass the resolution to pay the bills that need to be paid. We don't expect to pursue substantive stuff on Monday, December 23. We will be back in January on Monday, January 13. That's when that public hearing we just set will occur. But in the meantime, we want to wish everybody the happiest of all holiday seasons, whatever it is you celebrate. We hope they are happy and healthy. Thank you for your attention. Good night.